I'm going to officially call the meeting to order and we are being recorded. So this is a meeting of the first ever ZBA selection committee. It is comprised of our Director of Community and Economic Development, a representative from the zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Tarbell, and myself as Chair of the Town Council. So Joe, thank you. You are our first candidate.
Sure.
Did you have the list of questions?
I do.
Great. So I think what we'll do, we're going to, we're going to stay strictly to the list of questions that were given us by Town Council. So maybe what I will do is take like the first two or three, then Chip, you want to ask some? Or do you have a preference on which ones you ask?
Well, I'm just, I'm confused that we're staying with just his.
Oh, well, we can ask others as long as we're consistent across.
I will ask the same questions to everybody.
Yep. So, so that's the plan. We'll ask the same questions. I'm probably going to stick to his. So I might have one other one, but we'll be.
I might have a couple others being a member of the ZBA.
Very good. Yes, I, I, I think as long as we stay consistent, that's important. And then we, then we get, we have a way to compare all four. So.
Yeah.
So, so Joe, why don't you first just introduce yourself?
Joe Pride, live at 489 Lowell Street. I've been in Wakefield, I believe, I've been married nine years. So I've been here eight years, I believe. Two kids, I have a seventeen year old boy. He's, I have him on the weekends. He lives in a film with his mother. And I have a six year old, another boy, Alex, that goes to the Delvea down the street. So I'm in construction, been in construction since I was, I don't know, six years old, I guess I would say. But officially sixteen, I went to Minnetonka Tech at Lexington. I grew up in Metford. Went to Wentworth for construction management, got my bachelor degree in construction management.
Great. And you are already on the zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So as, as, so as you know, the chief role is to hold hearings. Clearly know that. Is there, which can be contentious, is there anything in your experience that's prepared you to, to run a good hearing? Either from your own experiences, from watching others? In terms of, you know, giving people a chance to speak, firmly controlling the meeting, pursuing information and the like?
Yeah. So I worked for myself for years and then about five years ago, I decided to put the tools down for a little while. And I worked for a construction management company as a site superintendent. I worked for Conley Brothers out of Beverly and Quorum Company, which is a union company in Boston. So doing tenant fit ups and stuff like that. So I used to have all weekly meetings with the subs and weekly meeting with the owners, owners, reps, architects, engineers, going over the schedule, budget, RFs that we needed to get answers from the architect and, you know, so on and so forth with that. So, and as a carpenter and working for my own company, I would have to meet the owners all the time and go over, you know, same kind of things with that. That was more, you know, lower key because it was just, you know, me and maybe a couple of subs with the owners from time to time. Looking at the job in the beginning and then, you know, going through what's questions that I had or change orders, things like that. So yeah, I mean, the ZBA is not my first official meeting.
Chip, you want to, you want to go? You're on mute.
I'm going to get used to this sometime in the next two years.
No, we'll never get used to it. It's not natural.
I hope not. Joe, what makes, you know, whether you're new or not, what makes you want to do the ZBA work here in Wakefield?
So originally, one of the, actually, one of the questions is kind of like that. So originally, I had to go in front of the ZBA for my own continuation of a non-performing lot. I had to knock a garage down in the back and when I went to the inspectors, I had to go for continuation of, you know, finding a non-performing lot. So I went in front of you guys and I, you know, I found it very interesting. And then I think one day I was on the way home, I stopped to grab the paper. I saw there was an opening. So that's one of the reasons I jumped in. I, like I said, I didn't grow up here. So for me, I like, you know, I'm in construction. I like to see things built. I want to have a say if at all possible, but to see how it's going to be built. I know there are some people that like to try to glaze over some of the drawings because they figure a lot of people can't redraw them. So that's one of the ways I feel like I can fit in on the ZBA is to find out what's, you know, what's missing on drawings, things like that. But I do like to have a, you know, a somewhat of a say of what kind of goes on in this, in this town. So people aren't just building out of control.
Thank you.
Question there.
Aaron, did you want to ask anything?
I'm just going to, if you don't mind, just go off Tom's.
That's fine.
I'm Mullins. I guess the first question, you know, the ZBA's job is chiefly to hold hearings, which are often contentious.
Oh, I already asked that one.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. You did that. You know, here's one. Every decision the ZBA makes disappoints someone. Are you able to look another person in the eye and say no? When have you done so?
Yeah. So I feel like that, like we had a decision a few weeks back, the Water Street decision. And the neighbor was complaining about how they were building too close to the property line when that was in a district with no, like the zero zoning setbacks. When he, when he himself did exactly the same thing years prior. And I, I felt like that was just like, you know, it was okay for him to do something. And then now that his neighbor wants to do it, he kind of shines in now and all of a sudden, wait, wait. You're building too close, close to the property line when in fact they were four feet away and he was actually right on the property line. So I, you know, I don't want to say no all the time. I feel, you know, I do feel for some people when they have like a good view and then people build, you know, and then all of a sudden now they have a shady spot. They lose their sunlight. But I mean, we have these rules in, in set in place thirty-five feet. I mean, if people abide by that, I mean, it's, you know, if everyone, if no one built in this town, then we'd have like six houses, you know? So I just feel like, I just feel like if you're a homeowner in this town and pay taxes, you should be able to do what you want to your house as long as you're within the guidelines of the, of the zoning guidelines. But every, with Wakefield, every lot, not every lot has a chance to have the hundred feet or just like my lot that I needed to go in front of the board for five.
Right.
You know?
So I guess that kind of leads into a next, my, my other question, which is on here. So your familiarity with the zoning or the land, land use, and I say law, but it's not all law. How do you feel like your familiarity is kind of with the rules of the, of the ZBA game?
Yeah. So in the beginning, I, I mean, I didn't know what was going on. So it took, it took a long time. I mean, I think I even put that in with my application. It took a good year to even get figured out what was going on. And then when you read some of these, these bylaws, you read, you have to read them like six or seven times before you can even figure out. I mean, does it, because it feel like they use like two negatives and a positive. And you're like, did they say I can or did they say can't? I had to read it like another six times to figure it out. So some of the laws are somewhat like ambiguous or I don't know how to put it in a phrase. But I don't do that answer.
No, that's, yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
No, they're, they're not easy.
You're muted.
Or you're on another call.
I'll get there.
No worries.
Joe, we meet Tuesdays and Wednesday. Tuesday, we meet the Wednesday every second week, second and fourth week of every month, except for the holiday season.
Yeah.
And this is a three-year commitment. What are your thoughts on that sort of commitment?
So growing up, I used to do bingo service. I used to set the tables every Wednesday. So only have it twice. It's not a big deal. I'll be honest with you. When I first, when I first applied, I thought, I, I figured I was just, I had in my mind I was going to do three and up. And I had that probably for the first year. And then once I started getting familiar with the laws and, you know, I looked forward to it, not all the time. I don't look forward to saying up till one in the morning sometimes.
I was going to say, how long it is?
It's almost like when we quit, when we finish off at ten o'clock, I don't know what to do with myself on a Wednesday night. But no, I have no problem with the, with the schedule. Like I says, I originally just came in this as a one and done kind of thing. But after like the first year and I started, especially when I didn't know anything at the beginning, I was like, this is ridiculous. I don't know if I'm going to be able to, I knew I was going to, I would never quit. I knew I was going to do it three years. But after that first year, I really got involved and, and decided that I wanted to do at least another term. Maybe, I mean, definitely I'm out of here. So I want to do another one, but probably another one after this, definitely. So.
Well, that was, that was my thought too. And now I'm eighteen years later.
Yeah.
So that's a few meetings here and there.
Yeah, exactly.
Good. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Chip.
Well, you have time for one more. Aaron, you want to do another one?
Why don't I do number seven? You kind of touched upon this, but I think this is important for especially this board here. The zoning bylaws, oh my gosh, it's a long day. The criteria the ZBA is supposed to apply to each case, but only humans who want to achieve other ends, such as preserving the town the way you know it, or maximizing economic growth. Can you tell us of any time when you had a heart versus head conflict? When the rules told you to go one way and your emotions pushed you in the opposite direction? What did you do in retrospect? Do you think you, you did the right thing?
Yeah, I mean, I touched on this a little, like I feel like a couple of questions back. I mean, I, I do feel like again, I feel like any homeowner in Wakefield or any town has the right to do whatever they want to do to their house. We, the variance is, is always the harder one to, you know, to achieve because you got to show a hardship. And a lot of times people will come in and say, well, my hardship is I don't want to dig there because it's a big rock. And it's like, well, it's really not a hardship. You just need to spend more money. I mean, money's a hardship these days with prices going up. But it's really not a hardship that we look for. Like if you have, if it's contaminated land, I mean, not contaminated, but if it's a conservation land, stuff like that, you can't build and you have to put it on the side, that's, that's, that's where we would say, you know, all right, you can build your, you know, give you a variance. But if it's just because you, that's where you want your kitchen, you want it on this back of your house or the side of, you know, the side of your house or the back. But you have plenty of room in the back. I mean, it's, to us, it's not really a hardship. So again, like I said earlier, I do feel bad for people where they had a beautiful view and then now they don't. I mean, I'm a lucky one. I have a acre of land in Wakefield. Of course, I'm unlucky because I have eleven neighbors. But again, again, I have eleven neighbors. So I would never tell any one of my neighbors not to do something because I wouldn't want them to tell me not to do something. And then when I came in front of this board three years prior, I went to a couple of my neighbors where I was building and showed them what I was building. And one of, one of my neighbors was fine with it. The other one was a little upset because I was building right basically over his pool. And he told me that he didn't want me to build the large deck that I had planned, which was like twenty-five foot deck, which was going to be looking right over his pool. And he actually felt bad saying that, but I ended up building a smaller deck, which was like eight by ten. And I actually thanked him because it probably saved me about twenty thousand dollars in material just to, just for him to say, listen, I'd rather you not build right, looking right over my pool, which I did, you know? I would never, that's why I went to my neighbors and that's why we always encourage the people that come to our board to go to your neighbors. Because even when they say, yeah, yeah, you know, when you say to them over the fence, hey, I'm going to build something, they say, yeah, build whatever you want. They might just say that, but if you've come down with a nice set of plans and you show them what you were going to build, then they can, you know, they can say, well, I'd rather you do this and do that, you know? And then if you have your neighbors on your side, then you, we like to see people that go to their neighbors and they have them in their corner. Because if the neighbors are okay with it, then we should be too.
Great. Do you have any closing remarks, anything we didn't touch upon that you want to emphasize or share?
No, I just appreciate you guys meeting with us tonight, with me tonight. And yeah, I mean, like I says, yeah, no, again, I, I originally, like I said, I originally came on here. I wanted to get back to town. You know, my son goes right down the street and, you know, I enjoyed being on for the last three years. And I look forward to another three if I get that opportunity. So thanks for everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you like.
All right, Chip, thanks.
Let's see, who's, who's next? Aaron?
Deborah.
Deborah, great.
Please, she just joined us here. So hi, Deborah. Thanks for joining us. Oh, you're still muted.
Yeah, I may be able to. Oh, much better. There we go.
Okay.
Hi, Deborah. I'm Julie Smith Galvin. I'm with the Town Council. I'll let Chip introduce himself.
I'm Chip Tarbell. I'm a member of the ZBA.
Hi, Chip. Hi, Julie.
Hi, it's Aaron. We spoke the other day on the phone. Thanks for joining us. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director for the town.
Thank you.
So I, you, I mean, I know that this is a brand new committee that was just formed to get a better sense of the people applying to ZBA. We'll make a recommendation. The committee itself will make a recommendation. Then the ultimate decision is up to the Town Council at our meeting on Monday. So we have some questions that we're asking all the candidates. We'll just go in the same order that we did the last one. I'll start. So the ZBA's job is chiefly to hold hearings, which can be contentious. Is there anything in your experience that has prepared you to run a good hearing? Like patiently giving everyone a chance to speak, firmly controlling the meeting or doggedly pursuing information you need? If you have an example of something?
I do. In my past, in my career at Mass General and the Brigham, I'm sorry, the Beth Israel, but mostly at Mass General. I've public spoken. I've had to listen to people's complaints. I was, I was an operations manager for hazardous waste management, biomedical waste management. I had a full staff and, you know, there's always things that can go wrong. But I loved that job. That was a great job. But I, you know, I learned how to, you know, my background and my degree is management, healthcare. And what I tell people even now, when, when I was temping, because I'm, I just finished a temp job. I would say, you know, when people yell at each other, if you're yelling at me or I'm yelling at you, no one's hearing anything. So you have to tone it down, stay calm. You listen to me, I listen to you. And, and that's how you can solve problems. And so it's come sick, second nature to me. And that in my personal life too. So I don't argue. I don't yell.
Thank you. Joe? We're going to go kind of round robin here. Go ahead.
Good evening, Deborah.
Hi, Joe.
Tell me why you want to be a member of the ZBA.
Well, I find it very interesting. I, I've never worked for a town before. I've never been on a board before and I am retired. So when I first submitted my application, I thought this might be interesting to do. I have myself filed a complaint. It's still in the process. And I know when that happens, I have to recuse myself if I am on the board. Because I look at the laws of the Town of Wakefield and the zones and all this. And I am one who follows, you know, right to the T at work, where I live. If the town says, hey, you have to buy this, when we first moved here, they told us we had to buy, say, the recycling bin and our trash bin. And we buy it and we take good care of everything out there. So I'm a rule follower and I think that if something comes up between neighbors or there's someone not following the rule, I, I'd like to be a part of that. That's just who I am.
I can't remember if it was Chip or me that asked.
Aaron, you went next. Yeah, you did the number five. Yeah.
Yep, that's okay. So always kind of go and sound alike, but are different in a way. So the next question we have is every decision the ZBA makes disappoints someone. Are you able to look another person in the eye and say no? When have you done so?
I know I've said no to people, mostly probably in my jobs. I know there was like an administrative assistant I had once when we all worked for this doctor at the Beth Israel. And she wanted to do something and I had to say no. I had another administrative assistant who didn't do her job. Someone else was doing it. And when I found out, I just called her in and I spoke with her and I said, you cannot do someone else's job. And then I called in the girl who wasn't doing her job and I spoke with her and I said, if you really want to stay here, you have to do your job. I don't really have a problem saying no. If somebody asks for my help in my own family and I don't have the time or I'm, I have an appointment, I have to say no. If I'm available, I'll say yes. But I've had to even teach my younger sister, no is okay. It's okay. You know, it's not a big deal. Well, it might be for them, but no, not for me.
Thank you. So do you have any special familiarity with the zoning or land lose, land law? I can't talk either. Land use law? I mean, it's certainly not a requirement, but just what, what is your familiarity with it?
Well, I'm on, I do go on the Town of Wakefield quite a bit. I look up when the assessments go up, I look up. I have my real estate license as well. So I'm, I watch, I still get the daily listings from Wakefield and Stoneham just to get, get an idea of what's, what's, what's for sale, what they're asking. I look at the, the house and I'll think, oh, no, oh, yes, that's good. Or even in not my own area, I live on Witship Drive and some of these houses, like when the Childswynship Mansion was up there and we're having problems, I was always on the phone with the police because the kids were just making a mess. Now they built one house and I know what that sold for. And now they're building house number two. And we, they had a surveyor up there. We had our, our place surveyed. So everybody was in a line there. And I do talk to James who bought that mansion a long time ago. So I keep in touch with him when I have questions. I went online to see my neighborhood is a zone for single family. We all have like kitchens down, this is all new to me. When we looked at this house, down, if you go downstairs, it's a family room. And then there's another room with a handicap bathroom and almost a full kitchen. And apparently the people who lived here before had a family member live down there. And my neighbors all told me initially, you know, you can't, you can't rent it out. You, it has to be family. So we've been trying to convince my mother to live here, but she, she's ninety-three. She won't live here. She wants to live alone. So she's, she's perfectly fine. But so that's kind of my experience in that. And I did practice real estate in Newton where I lived before. And, but it was, it was heck. I, I was, I keep the license and someday if I do it, fine. If not, it's okay, you know? But I do look at the zones. I see different areas of Wakefield. My mom used to have a condo on Water Street. So I'm, I came from Melrose originally, so I am familiar with all these towns. And I just like to keep abreast of everything that goes on. And I look at some of the minutes of other committees from the boards. And I've actually been to the board meeting when James bought the land up here and he wanted to put the two houses and it was going back and forth. And we supported him because we, we couldn't wait for that mansion to come down. And it was really interesting. And I just said, wow, this is, this is fun. I mean, to me, I found it fun. But it was, that's what kind of got my interest out there. So.
Great. Thanks. Yeah. So we meet the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, of every year that you're on. So that's a huge commitment because if you, if you miss, the Town Council doesn't look favorably on that as they appoint us. And, you know, they want people to participate and be involved. How do you feel about that commitment?
I'm still thinking about it because I said to my husband, when we go on vacation, what happens? So what happens? I don't know.
I can tell you, I can tell you I zoomed from Austria.
Oh, okay. Then we can, then that wouldn't be a problem.
And also I think I'll just note too, the ZBA, I think my, I don't know, I don't want to speak for them. I have the record for longest meetings, at least recent ones. It's not an early night either on top of that. So.
I know. Having gone to the planning board meetings, I know some of those meetings ran long when we were there. And then once they finished the mansion, then we would stay a little bit longer because I'd say, let's stay just, I want to see what else they're talking about. And then by nine o'clock, we were like, we got to go.
Okay. I think I'm wrapping it up here, right? Okay. So the zoning bylaws specify the criteria the ZBA is supposed to apply to each case. But it's only human to want to achieve other ends, such as preserving the town the way you know it, or maximizing economic growth. Can you tell us of any time when you had a heart versus head conflict? When the rules told you to go one way and your emotions pushed you in the opposite direction? What did you do? In retrospect, do you think you did the right thing?
I honestly can't think of any time. For me personally, well, when I had my house in Newton, I had to, I hired a contractor. And I did know the inspector there. And my contractor, I found out my contractor did not apply for a permit because I was putting in like twenty-two windows and I was having other work done. So I went down to Town Hall and I, I told them, I said, is there a permit for my property? And they said, no. I said, do I need one? And they said, yes. So I met with the, the inspector and he came down and he met with my contractor and then there was a permit. But other than that, I can't think of anything that I, you know, got involved in.
Great. Do you have anything that you want to share with us that we haven't asked you or any closing thoughts?
No, I think I have a pretty good sense. I've been online a lot lately, you know, looking and reading and looking at other boards, looking at minutes and agendas and see what happens. And, you know, Wakefield's a lovely town. The only, the only thing is I've also watched all the condos going up and I'm like, oh my God. And then older homes going down and new houses going up. And I like, it's so modern, but yet they're in an area where there's some beautiful Victorians and older homes. Where we live on Witship, it's beautiful up here. We absolutely love it. We've been here six years now. So we're just, we're thrilled.
Well, thank you for applying. It's, it's a lot to step up and want to do a job like this. And we appreciate your application. And I should have said the same to Mr..
Welcome. And thank you. Thank you for meeting with me. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And you're welcome to stay. This is an open meeting. So.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to, but you're welcome to. Mr. McBane, I think is next up, right, Aaron?
Yes, he is. And I think I saw he's on, right?
I think he's on. Yeah. All right. Hi, Jim.
Hi.
Great. And I, so I, I, I think you know that this is the newly formed selection committee, you know, Chip, Julie Smith Galvin from Town Council. We know each other and you know, Aaron. And so we're asking the same questions of all candidates. As you know, the final decision is going to be with the Town Council. This committee will make a recommendation, as will the, the ZBA Chair as well. So we'll just get started. Jim, is that okay? You okay? Great. So you all know that the ZBA's job is chiefly to hold hearings, some of which can be contentious. Is there anything in your experience that has prepared you to run a good hearing? Like giving people a chance to speak, controlling the meeting firmly, or pursuing information that you need? Can you share some of your experiences?
Well, as, as you all know, I'm an architect by training, basically with some forty-one years of experience, basically. So the one thing that happens with architects basically is they have to herd the flock. All right? And that's dealing with clients. And in my particular case, I was also in management over time, basically. I grew up with a company and had to deal with staff issues and stuff like that. At the same time, I'm dealing with contractors in the field. And so part of that basically is really getting to understand the, the project and the objective, basically, of the project. And more recently, I was on the Crescent Hill project, which took a bunch of, Amy and I basically dealt with some sixteen, I think, off-screen meetings while they were on screen. But they were two of us basically working out to, to get that project to a place where it's more acceptable within that neighborhood block, basically, even though we're restricted, basically, as to what we could do. So I, I think I bring a lot of experience and time and effort. And plus being on the board for twenty year, twenty-one years as well, basically have been an asset to that board. Primarily, I think because of an architect and plus the, plus the past experience at the same time.
Great, thank you. Chip?
So this is a little strange for me because Jim and I work pretty closely, but, uh,
That's okay, it's just so we all have the same information.
For the board, I usually would make a crack about that, but I can't tonight. So Jim, you've been doing this for seventeen years, twenty-one years, however long we've been doing it, I'd lose track of the time. Why do you want to keep doing it? Why do you want to be on the ZBA anymore? You've, you've done your thing.
Yeah, well, I'm also retired, so I need to fill some time, but I think I, I also bring, I, I think, um, a little bit of anchor to the group and experience basically that. The, the thing about the ZBA, it really needs a broad base of experience and I think I bring a base of experience that doesn't exist within the board. And, and I don't know, I don't know, there's maybe only one other person, it might have been, had some architectural training over time. But, um, but generally it's, it's not, it's not one of those things that architects are hanging out in, basically, that world. Um, so I think I, I bring, um, a little balance and experience to the board to understand what goes on behind the scenes after a project gets started or gets approved.
Thank you.
Great, I'm up. Finally have it down now, be order. Every decision the DVA makes disappoints someone. Are you able to look another person in the eye and say no? When have you done so?
Well, I'll go, uh, I've, I've done it a number of times without any problem because I believe in what I'm doing. And believe, believe that whatever I'm doing basically is the best within the, the bylaw and within basically what's appropriate for the town. And I would bring us back to Crescent Street, the most recent one, since everybody, everybody in this group basically knows what it is. And there are many times basically where in that project and that subcommittee, basically, I absolutely said no as the progression of this thing went on. And there were many, many issues on that, just not just the architectural design, but many, many other things, also bringing to the, bringing to the, to the meetings basically, other ideas that people hadn't thought about. And so I feel perfectly comfortable with saying no, but at the same time, sometimes those no's get into a different discussion or a different way of looking at things. Particularly as you hear from somebody and they say, no, I can't do this because, and then you start to work your way around it the way it might actually work out for both parties in, in some sort of compromise. And that, that group of myself and Amy basically was all about taking, uh, the twelve o'clock hours away from the, uh, book, the whole board basically and putting it on our shoulders basically to get something done. So we can go back periodically and present progress basically to the board, which I think worked out very, very well on that project. And has worked out on some others basically that I've worked on, like twenty-seven Waters, twenty-seven, I guess, thirty-seven, twenty-seven Water Street. If you only knew the, the not hole that presented because the design that was put before us and approved was not what the client was going to do after the fact, but we finally got it, we finally got what the design was in a, in a better building at that location.
Interesting. Can I, can I, Chip, maybe you can answer this, just is, is it common for there to be kind of these, these breakout groups? Like Jim, I know that you, you've worked on a number of these, for complex projects, it's, it's common to have kind of that extra level of.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not like someone's put in a porch or an addition on a house, basically, these are big, big projects.
Okay.
And if, if we were to be a group of people, basically the zoning board and sit there and discuss design, we would bore the audience one. Um, and at the same time, um, everybody would be falling asleep because we'd be going to one or two o'clock in the morning. So we decided sometime back, I'm, I'm not even sure when, but we did it with a few, it worked out great. We decided to continue the process basically and help to get this pushed forward and, and moved over the, over several humps, basically. So in coming back to the board with the progress we made, even to the point where the group, Amy and myself in some cases, um, basically got to a place where we thought certain aspects were solved and others weren't. But we thought we should bring it back to the board and to the public for that matter, even though they could look in to note where we had, how, how much progress we've made.
That's, that's, that's really helpful for me to understand as well, so, um, thank you.
Julie, the, yeah, it started probably ten years ago as the projects got bigger and more complex. And we're very fortunate to have people on the committee that will go in and put the extra time in. Um, and, but it really does help, even though we go, still go to twelve or one o'clock often. Um, a lot of work get done in these breakout groups because it's smaller, it's dealing on more precise issues. Um, and it just works well.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's important, you know, for us to understand as interviews, but also for candidates and others to understand. So thanks, thank you for that. Um, this question.
I should note before you get on the next question is that the board sometime back also decided that someone would look at the drawings, the, the construction drawings when they come flew through to the building department to make sure they comply with what's been approved. Another one of my tasks as well.
I was gonna say, is that your task as an architect? Okay.
Look at, look at the markup panels as well to make sure that they comply with the materials and the design that we approved at the same time. Keep the developers, um, you know, in line.
I'm married to an architect, I hear that a lot. Um, so, so like Chip, this sounds probably a little obvious, but, um, do you have any special familiarity with zoning or land use laws?
Well, that's, yeah, it's one of those things, like all these questions you were asking are like right up the, the canal for architects because as part of architecture, basically, you've got to design within parameters of zoning and, and or land use for that matter. In the smaller projects, architects generally do their own zoning reviews, but in larger ones, the developer will have an attorney. But you've got to interface with the attorney and the, and the developer basically to make sure your design basically is compliant with the regulations that are in the town. Or in, in some cases like Boston, it's much more complicated basically on regulations. Uh, particularly when it comes to FARs and stuff like that, high-rise buildings.
Great, thank you.
Jill, Jim, I just continue on kind of the, why do you want to keep doing this? Because I can't get beyond it because I ask myself the question too often, but as you well know, we meet, you know, a couple of times a month. Oftenly, you've done many side, side meetings. Are you ready to make another three-year commitment?
Uh, yes, yes. I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm not bored of it. And I, and I find that each project brings its own challenge. Um, and I feel as though that I can make a difference with some of the stuff that's approved or at least fine tune it to a better condition than was presented to us. So, you know, as long as I, as long as I feel as though I'm making a difference, I'd like to stay.
Thanks.
All right, and I'll wrap it up. Um, so the zoning bylaws specify the criteria the DVA is supposed to apply to each case. But it's only human to want to achieve other ends, such as preserving the town the way you know it or maximizing economic growth. Can you tell us of any time you had a heart versus head conflict? When the rules told you to go one way and your emotions pushed you in the opposite direction, what did you do? In retrospect, do you think you did the right thing?
I, I don't think I want to actually get into that discussion only because I think it, it's sort of, um, it's, it's, it's gets into how I make my decisions. Or, you know, and I just, I don't think that anybody, I, I make my decisions. I don't think anybody ought to know whether I sort of was on the edge or not on the edge. But I'll tell you that as, as another volunteer, um, for the design review board, which does signage basically, um, since that's not zoning, so I can discuss it, um, is that a lot of times you have to explain to the applicant uh, what the process is, what the regulations are. You try to convince them to do better than what they're proposing. Um, you know, and hopefully with new ordinance, once we get it out, which has been way late for about a year and a half, two years now because of COVID. Um, is that will, the design review board will have a little more control and a little more ability to allow those applicants to do what they want, but do it better. Um, if, if we can't as a board and as a chairman come to some sort of agreement, then we just tell them, you know, we're not the highest authority, they can go to the zoning board. Basically, and we will either support where they're going or not support it, or in some cases maybe half support one sign and not another or something like that, and we make a recognition to the, to the ZBA when they go for a special permit. I do not involve myself with the voting at the zoning board. Um, I only represent what the design review board is case, case and where they stand basically on the matter. So, um, we try to basically convince people of the right thing to do. And other cases, we know that what they want to do is right, but the zoning board, the regulation doesn't allow them to do it. Um, basically, so we basically support them going before the zoning board to get that. And we, at the same time, support them in a memo to the board recommending agreement on, on getting a permit.
Great. Looks like you might have frozen there, right on the last word. Maybe that is the last, oh no, you're back. Anything that you want to close with or anything we haven't asked you?
He might be frozen. It's happened, it's happened before.
I'm here.
Just any, if you have any closing remarks or anything we didn't ask you that you'd like to share?
No, uh, just that I'd like to continue my work, that's all.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for being willing to step up again and for all your service today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, and you're welcome to stay on if you like. We have one more candidate, um, Kevin York, I think he's on.
Hi Kevin.
So I think you've been on, you've probably heard me give this spiel, right? This new committee, okay. Um, so, welcome. Um, we will just go, there you are, you moved on me, somebody came off. Um, so I'll start with the first question, ZBA's job is, no, actually, no, yeah, no, I have the first question, then Chip. By the fourth person, I'd have this. Um, the ZBA's job is to chiefly hold hearings, um, which can be contentious. Is there anything in your experience that's prepared you to run a good, um, hearing? For example, patiently giving everyone a chance to speak, controlling meetings firmly or pursuing information that you need?
Sure, so, uh, I'm a business owner, I've run a PR agency for eight years now, so, um, I, I would say just not only our team meetings where we meet with each other, but also when we go to meet with clients where at times they call us in to meet with the top executives at the, at the company. We have to lead those meetings when the topics focus on PR and marketing and we have to make sure that we listen to everyone. Uh, especially those people who may not be as outspoken as others to make sure that we can sort of get the information, the nuggets from them that we need, and oftentimes those tend to be the most valuable. So I have plenty of experience running those meetings, making sure that everyone has a say, we hear from everyone. Um, a lot of times those will get pretty passionate, people feel pretty strongly about their work and, and how that work is being promoted to the community, especially when it comes to PR, so that, um, that's pretty normal for me, I think, handling those type of situations.
Thank you.
Kevin, just, I read your, your application and, you know, you spoke to why you wanted to be on the ZBA. But if you could put that in your, in your words now and tell me, you know, what you've seen in past CBA meetings or whatever that you've attended and why you want to do this work.
Sure, so I, I think I first became more interested in it last year. We had a client that, um, uh, they're, they're called Co-Organize and they're a technology company that would sort of bring the community engagement aspect of, um, development hearings online to hear from more people and try to make it more equitable. Make sure that it wasn't just sort of the loudest voices in those respective communities that were being heard, but everyone was truly being heard. Uh, so a lot of what we did for them was research. So I, I was reading a lot about how zoning works in different communities across the country where they had clients, whether it be LA or Chicago or there were some here locally in Boston, um, some in Salem. And as I started to read more about it, I, I realized, uh, hey, I, I kind of like this and found myself doing it at night, even when it wasn't part of the regular workday or the projects that we were doing for them. Um, and became pretty interested in it and I know that there's a lot of discussion about development here in Wakefield um, that can get pretty heated. And for me, my thinking was, I would like to be a, a positive part of this. Um, and do my part to help find solutions to it and not just sort of add to the noise that's out there criticizing the work of, of the ZBA and, and others trying to, to put smart development into the town.
Thank you.
I'll just have to say, Co-Organize is a great, I use that, that work as well, it's a great tool.
All right.
Erin.
Yeah, okay, I'm muted. Every decision the DVA makes disappoints someone. Are you able to look another person in the eye and say no when you have done so?
Yes, uh, I, I have to do this pretty frequently as part of my job where, um, a lot of times clients will have ideas that they think are great and then when, um, when you actually start to put it into motion or, or they start to, there tends to be times where they haven't sort of thought about the down ripple effects of those. So I, I think there are a lot of conversations that um, I have to have with clients, but do it in a way where it's, it's not sort of a, a firm, uh, sort of directive no. But have a conversation about it and help them understand why it should be done a different way or a different way, or why, um, why the, the initial plan that they had in their head may not work, uh, as, as they had hoped that it would work in the first place. So, um, I would say it is a no, but it's more in a, a solution-based way to sort of come to an agreement and kind of get them to understand there's a better way to do things. So a little bit more of a collaborative no than, than sort of a firm no.
Great, thank you.
You may have already touched upon this, Kevin, um, but in terms of your familiarity with zoning and land use law. I mean, I know you touched upon kind of where your interest comes from and, but if you could just elaborate a bit on that.
Um, yeah, I, I would say beyond sort of the work that I did with, with Co-Organize last year where it was just sort of becoming more familiar with it. Um, nothing special. I, I, I know the word special was in there when you asked some of the, the previous applicants. Um, so I, I, I don't have.
Special familiarity, you're right. Not being precise.
Some, some familiarity. Um, but, but I will say where, what I may lack there, I think where I can make up for that is in, in my work as a PR consultant, there are a, a lot of different types of companies that hire me. So it could be a tech company, it could be an insurance company, a brewery, um, an infrastructure technology company. And part of my job is to get up to speed on their industry and what they do really, really quickly. Um, because to pitch reporters and have an intelligent, intelligent conversation with reporters who are typically pretty close to subject matter experts in these areas that they write on. I have to be able to show them that I know what I'm talking about in order to get them on the phone with my client to have a deeper conversation. So I'm pretty used to getting up to speed on topics that, um, a lot of them, when it comes to infrastructure, technology are, are not topics that I ever wanted to learn about particularly. But put in that situation, um, I, I, I do pretty well with that. And for something like zoning, which, which I sort of do have more of an interest in, I'm pretty confident I could get up to speed relatively quickly.
Thanks, Kevin. We, you, if I'm correct, you said you own your own business, right? So we meet every second and fourth Wednesday of every month all year long and the meetings often go sometimes to midnight, sometimes to the next day. Uh, and one of the things is because you have continued hearings, it's very important to have continuity and stuff like that. Are you ready? Can you make that commitment? And are you ready to make that commitment? You know, you have a presentation on Thursday and we have a meeting Wednesday night, you're not quite done.
Right, right. Got to plan ahead then. But, but, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to do that, that, that wouldn't be an issue for me.
All right, last question of the night. The zoning bylaws specify the criteria the DVA is supposed to apply to each case. But it's only human to want to achieve other ends, such as preserving the town the way you know it, or maximizing economic growth. Can you tell us of any time you had a heart versus head conflict? When the rules told you to go one way and your emotions pushed you in the opposite direction? What did you do? In retrospect, do you think you did the right thing?
Yeah, I, I would say one example of this, just from having owned a business and have employees, sometimes you bring an employee on board and it doesn't always go the way that you both hoped. So there is a difficult conversation to have there. And in your head, you know that changes have to be made, but in your heart, it's also a person that you care about. They've been a member of the team and just as a general human, you don't want to hurt anyone or, or put them through hardship that way. So there is a balancing act there, but I think ultimately you have to remember, at least for me as a business owner, I have to remember there, there are more people in that equation than just the two of us. There are other people at the company that depend on certain things being done. There are clients that depend on certain things being done. And, um, you, you have to sort of rationalize that with yourself to make that tough decision. And it's never fun. But I think it is just one of those things when you're in that position in life that you have to do. And I think this, this would be similar to that where there are a lot of emotional conversations that happen, but there are, are regulations and bylaws that we have to look at and make sure that we're following them the way that we're supposed to for the good of the town and, and everyone in town.
Thank you.
Any closing remarks or anything we didn't ask you that you would like to offer?
I don't think so. Just thanks to, to all three of you for your time and, um, thank you for considering me. Good luck with your decision and, um, I, I love to serve.
Thanks. Thanks for stepping up to volunteer in the town. It's not a, this is not a light committee to even express interest in. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Great. Thanks. Okay. Um, so let's see here. So I think what we have to do is I don't believe we need a formal vote, but we can do that if we think that they are, that the need is there. We have to, um, kind of talk through what recommendations we will want to make to the town council on Monday. Um,
Well, I don't know if people are saw on, but that was, that was great. I think that went really well for the first time having to do that. Um, minus getting our questions mixed up, but that's okay. Um, but, uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone because like you said, Julie, and, and you know, and Chip, you know, um, I'm the employee here, but I, I, the commitment it takes to do these, um, these committees is, um, you know, we're very thankful for that. So even coming tonight, we're thankful for your time. But yes, I think based on discussions, it's more conversation between the three of us who we'd recommend for next week's meeting.
Right, right. Which we need to do now and we need to do it in public. So, which is always so worst meeting of the year is the appointment because everybody, I wish we had room for everybody. And I think in a way we do, just not informal. You know what I mean?
So many other committees that we have, and if it doesn't work out here, based on what I've heard, um, from everyone, um, there's a spot, I think, for everyone um, here to, to make a difference in town. So.
Right, right. Um, it's, um, it's, it's difficult. I think everybody, I think everybody's qualified. Everybody would bring a different perspective. Um, I think it's not, um, it's, it's not to be dismissed, the, the investment that's already been made in people like Jim and Joe. Um, you know, at the same time, some different perspective, um, would be, would be good as well. So, um, Chip, maybe you can talk about kind of what, you know, are there any holes or any gaps that you have right now? Or that would be caused?
I'm, I'm happy. So let me just start with Jeff.
Okay.
There is nobody in this town that puts in more time for the town than Jim McBane does. And I, I have to go on to say it. And it's difficult for me to rank anybody against him, myself included. Cause he just does so much. If, if we could monetize what he does for the town, he'd be the highest paid employee in my book, because if you ever saw and you've seen it at Crescent Street and other places, what the project looks like at the beginning and what it ends up. So for me, you know, Jim's done. It also for me, you know, first of all, I want to speak to Deborah and Kevin. Cause to even come to think about a ZBA commitment is a huge commitment. I think they'd both be fine if there was a need to replace somebody or to suggest that. But the qualifications of both Jim and Joe, we don't have holes, right? And unfortunately we have a really good group right now. We work well together. We've got contractors. We have Jim, the architect. We have lawyers. Uh, we have IT people. We have a whole host of, of group of people that really worked and we don't always agree. You know, but at the end, uh, we come up with what we think is best for the town by using the bylaws. And I, I think it's interesting that everybody seems to think the ZBA is the planning board. You know, we're a very different group. We have to fulfill the rules that the bylaws allow us to do. I always tell people, if you want to get involved in planning, go to the planning board. They make the bylaws. We just enforce them, right? So I think many people don't understand that, that criteria. So we enforce them. So first of all, so for, for me, recommending Jim to move forward is easy. Uh, and for Joe, it is as, as well, because his commitment over the last three years has been great. I don't think he's missed a meeting. I, I think he actually took one from Florida at one point with his family vacationing this, this past vacation potentially. Um, and everybody in the group kind of makes the meetings because if you miss one, you have to read up on it. You can't vote on it. Uh, and as, as I'm sure you know, we also have permanent members versus alternate members. And one of, one of the uniqueness thing, unique qualities of our board is we have a great opportunity to learn. Right? As an alternate member, you get to sit there occasionally voting because of conflict of our interest or whatnot. And then when there's a position on the full board, you get have to be careful. You should apply and then move up, right? That, that would make sense. Now they have to apply. It's not automatic.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
Okay. That we, Joe actually got put on because he replaced a full-time member and we actually had four sitting alternates that didn't know they had to apply. Three years. So we're, we're used to the process and it's fine because Joe's been great. So Joe brings the, so Jim's kind of, that would be my recommendation for Jim. Joe brings a really good grounded construction background and a little bit of reality to us that can kind of get high in us that have been on the board for a long time. Like he brings the reality in, right? He brings the young homeowner. The guy that, you know, hey, they want to put on a deck. Nobody has a problem. No neighbor has a problem. Let them put on the deck, you know, and, and sometimes we're like, but the bylaws, you know, and uh, so he grounds us often with the new homeowner, the younger member of the community, the people that are trying to raise their families here in town. So you know, Joe brings that really nice perspective. So and that's, I wouldn't want to lose that construction supervisor's license in the trade since he was a kid, kind of, um, feel from him moving forward.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation would be, uh, to both Kevin and Deborah, you know, again, there's lots of great, I think Kevin could be a great addition to, to many boards. I don't know, you know, what, what his thoughts are, but planning would certainly be a place to think about. Cause I think that PR perspective and growth and development, uh, you know, there are some bylaws that we do need to think about.
Right. Maybe, maybe even bylaw review committee, which we're appointing to, if you're still.
Shoot me now.
I don't know. I don't think the meetings will go till 1:00 AM. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think I agree with your assessment. I, I feel like, you know, Joe's only been on three years. He's got, he's finally got his feet, you know, under him. It, it takes a long time. I mean, I know that from town council, we're not dealing nearly with the amount of detail that you are. Um, so I, I think I agree. I, I'm really, I, I, I've, I've been a little ambivalent about this process. Um, you know, I know the town council voted on it, but I actually think this has been really interesting for us on town council and I intend to, you know, I'll talk about it on Monday to really see what the process is to better understand the makeup of the committee, um, and to see kind of what skills are being brought in from across town and in, in terms of the applicants. But um, I think I, I agree with you on, um, on Joe and Jim just, I mean, it's just when you put that kind of time and we've made that investment and they've made that investment in us, it's, it's a little hard um, for me to, to, to say, you know, somebody else can come in and, and do that work. Uh, I think eventually they can when there's an opening. So I would encourage everybody to continue to either look for other opportunities or, you know, keep an eye, if this is really what you love, keep an eye on ZBA and there will be, there'll be other opportunities. Erin?
Yeah. And, um, I will have to agree with both you, um, Julie and Chip in regards to Joe and Jim. Um, you know, I saw, I attend ZBA meetings as much as I can or, or listen to recordings and I see how much work goes into these projects, especially coming forward in front of the board now, um, and what Jim had to do with, um, Crescent, um, Crescent Commons and, and work to get the project, what it finally was approved for. Um, and I think, um, you know, that time can't, you know, you can't thank someone enough to bring that project to where it was. Um, and just his background as well and how many years he's been doing this because um, even as a new employee, I'm still trying to figure, you know, all these, it's, it's a lot. And it's, it's, um, a, a big time commitment to make sure that you're doing it the right way. Um, and then also, uh, with Joe, um, being a new board member, um, you know, three years, I think it's so fresh, bringing new perspective to what Chip was talking about. But also that construction background, I think is, um, is, is huge when you're looking at these plans. Um, he might see things that other people on the board don't see. And I think that's, uh, you know, very valuable to everyone. Um, so I would go ahead and, um, you know, I, I would recommend, um, Joe and Jim, um, to the, to the ZBA again. But again, uh, you know, Kevin, uh, especially, you know, you were just the last one to talk when it become, comes to zoning. I was sitting on the planning board too. And, you know, we have a whole Lake District overlay that we're looking at with the zoning and how we look at our future of the zoning with, um, the town and the master plan process. So um, highly would recommend looking more into the planning board when a seat opens up there because I think that's where you can be proactive.
Actually, that's an elected seat. You can run anytime.
Well, that's what I mean. Yeah. When that's, well, when a seat is up for election. Um, but, um, I think that's where that whole proactive, um, and getting creative too. So, and Deborah, I just, um, you know, it sounds like she wants to get involved with the community and, and what you alluded to, there's just many ways to do that, either that be committee or volunteer opportunities. So, um, so yeah.
Okay. Good. Then I think that this will be the recommendation again. It will really be up to the town council and, um, Chip, you or somebody else from the committee or, you know, are welcome to come or share what the committee's views are, um, either by letter or in the meeting.
Yeah, I'll, it depending on, as you well know, I think Julie, Dave had surgery for his knee today.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Which all went well.
Good.
We did speak about this and I can tell you that the recommendation from the board will also be for Joe and Jim.
Okay.
Um, however, you know, I'll come Monday and, and speak to it if necessary, if Dave hasn't written a letter by then. I think, I think maybe Amy as board clerk was, uh, drafting something for all of us to review.
Okay.
To send.
Great. Okay. Um, I think we can probably close this meeting and
But like Julie, why do you think no other town council member came to watch this as the first one? Just want to throw that out there, kid, because I love throwing a little fire on. I would have thought that there would be a lot of interest in how this went tonight because of the conversations and should it be done with other boards? And I thought it was, I hated the idea. I can tell you, I was strongly against it.
I know you did. I
Having done it, I'm okay with it.
I have to say, I'm okay with it. I mean, I, I definitely voted for it. So I'm not saying that I hadn't thought it through when I made that vote, but it, it, it just, you know, it's, it's hard. It's awkward and it's, um, you know, but, but it's worth it. You know, these are, these are hard activities and hard decisions.
Than just looking at people on paper.
Absolutely.
A lot better to see them in person.
I, I do find it. And you know, I'm on the environmental sustainability committee. We had a very competitive, um, pool there and, and yeah, it does make me kind of rethink things. So I appreciate this a lot.
I agree.
Good. All right. Well, thanks for your time. It's my birthday. I'm gonna go.
Happy birthday.
Your birthday?
Yeah.
So BK or the kids are still
I'm gonna go eat cake.
Blow out the candle, make the wish. Happy birthday.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Good night. Bye bye.